And I am calling this meeting to order. Would you please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Obviously Hillary and Donald don't have that much competition after all. Great evening. We will have a roll call, please. Sign in. Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
All councilors present, with Councilor Grego previously requesting to be excused, an aquorum has been declared.
Thank you. Next up, we have the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
Hawley?
No.
Counselor Beale?
Thank you, Mayor. If there are no deletions or additions to the agenda, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Grego from the meeting.
I second.
I've got a motion to second on the agenda approval. Is there any further discussion? See none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I believe I have one. Are there any other cards out there? Three-minute time limit. Please identify yourself and your address if you so wish. Tonight, we have one card. Well, we have two people on this one card, so we will start out with Mr. Charlie Sanchez. Thank you for being here, Mr. Sanchez, and Lupita Garcia, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors. So just here tonight, kind of to talk about Energy Resource Center and who we are, and with the hope of maybe coming back and presenting a little bit more about what our programs do and so on here for the Soundless Valley and for Alamosa. So basically, we're a sub-grantee to the Department of Energy, and we do weatherization work for the state of Colorado. And that's the biggest program that we basically cover, is the Weatherization Assistance Program. Over the last probably seven or eight years, we've lost a ton of money through that program, at least in these counties. We were running under ARA, or American Recovery and Reinvestment Act money, at about a $2.5 to $3 million budget, and right now, we are running at $300,000 this year. So because of that, we've had to go out and find some other programs to be able to backfill, to be able to keep our 15 people on staff. And so Energy Resource Center is basically running a program called the Nonprofit Energy Efficiency Program in conjunction with Energy Outreach Colorado. And what we do with that is we're able to do weatherization work, light retrofits, insulation, windows, doors, boilers, furnaces for nonprofits. And we've done several buildings for Blue Peaks and for, we've got a couple others. Yeah, La Puente. And we've got some more in the works right now, so that's been pretty positive for us. We're also the main contractor for the LEAP dollars, Low Income Energy Assistance Program dollars, Crisis Intervention Program. And so basically, what we do with that is we go out and we take care of heating issues or no heat situations for low-income folks throughout the entire Soundless Valley. And there's a lot of impact for Alamosa with what we do and Alamosa County. So with that, just as kind of a little teaser, I wanted to kind of put that out there and hope that maybe we could come back and talk about more. Lupita, do you have anything you'd like to add to what we do? We have a waitlist of people in the Soundless Valley, about 300 people right now, so it's like a two-year waitlist. And so we're not really quick to be able to get into people's homes the way we wish we could with this loss of dollars. It's made it kind of tough. We've got some other programs with XL that we're trying to do to bring more money in here, maybe to impact these folks faster.
SLVRC.
Oh, yeah. SLVRC. We've got a weatherization program going on that we've worked with SLVRC to be able to do some units for those folks. And we do have some other things going on. So I don't want to go over the time. Do you guys have any questions for us? That was like in a big rush and run in three minutes.
Absolutely. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, Charlie, you said a lot in three minutes. Thank you. And I'm glad for you and Lupita coming out here tonight and sharing that information with us. It's very important. I talked with you all a little bit earlier in the week, and the work that you're doing in our community is greatly needed, and it is important. I know some of the work that you've done because a lot of people have told me that you've helped them reduce a lot of their utility costs by the services that you provide. And it's not uncommon, what I've found in the housing industry, for a lot of our families who live in rural Colorado, it's not uncommon for them to pay, on average, of anywhere from 40% to 50% of what their monthly rent or mortgage payment is in utility costs. And the services that you provide is important, and I would really like to hear more about the services that you provide, and I think it would be a great benefit for our residents. So whenever you get a chance, if you could talk with our town clerk here, Hawley, and see if, whenever we have an opening, to have us on the agenda.
Thank you.
But thank you all for coming out here tonight to let people know about the services you provide.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
There any other questions or comments from council? Charlie, thank you for being here. You know, this is such an excellent resource, especially in our cold climate. You know, it's really incumbent on everyone to get involved with programs that may help them. And we thank you for being here. And as Counselor Coleman said, please come back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Keep us informed, keep us in the loop.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Next up, we have ceremonial items. This evening, we have the GOCO Starburst Award presented by Laura Solano, Executive Director of the Colorado State Lottery. Mrs. Solano, I'm sure you have a few people. Please come up and visit with us, please.
I have a team.
And let us know who you are. Please.
Come whoever would like to come, be part of our committee. My name is Laura Solano, and I am the State Colorado Lottery Director. I had an opportunity to meet these wonderful people today, and I'm happy to be here to talk a little bit about the Lottery Starburst Award Program. So I have some notes. Just to recap, the lottery mission, and you know, sometimes we lose track of what the mission of the Colorado Lottery is. So to remind everybody this evening, the Colorado Lottery creates and sells lottery games of chance that are held against the highest standards in integrity, entertainment, and efficiency. But the reason for it is to maximize proceeds that the monies then are returned to the people of Colorado. Since 1983, the Colorado Lottery has returned $2.9 billion to the citizens of the state of Colorado. On my watch this last year, in fiscal year, I was hoping to reach the $3 billion mark and came very, very close. So next year, hopefully, there will be a Starburst Award, too, and I'll be back to tell you that we hit a $3 billion return. This last fiscal year, $143.5 million was the all-time high of dollars that were returned to the citizens. The Starburst Award is intended to provide excellence to communities who use their Starburst Award to improve community conservation projects and outdoors. This year, there were 22 recipients across the state, and I've been fortunate enough to be in communities everywhere from Grand Junction to Ordway and down into Lamar and Lyman. So thank you for the invitation this evening. GOCO actually awarded this particular grant in the amount of $254,000, and it was awarded to the Trust for Public Land for the Rio Grande Park. Some of the highlights of the park, and Julie, can you speak to those? Or I have notes? Would you like for me to do it?
You can go for it.
All right. Some highlights of the park are, the Rio Grande Farm Park is located along a one-third mile on the eastern edge of the Rio Grande River in Alamosa. It connects the Greater Trail System along the river and contains a pedestrian bridge, which I happened to walk over today, and I had a great time. The farm provides up to an acre of farmland for new farmers, which are typically Guatemalan families using traditional Mayan family techniques. Farmers are educated on the use of the water conservation, harvesting, and soil health. The farm also has an apple orchard that was planted last summer. The Adams State Adventure Program allows youth and families to use the Rio Grande Blue Trail for recreational purposes. The project conserves riparian habitat and maintains habitat connectivity and protection. The park continues to expand through the help of wonderful volunteers and the local community in hopes that it will one day eventually become a central gathering point for the city. The Colorado Lottery congratulates you, and we'd like to thank the following, really the surrounding community, volunteers, including the college. Thank you to the San Luis Food Coalition, to GOCO and the Trust for Public Land, and thank you to the Colorado Lottery retailers. There are more than 3,200 retailers that sell lottery tickets to our players, and I stopped in a few of the retailers. That's part of my tour when I usually come out. And lastly, and most importantly, thank you to city council. I brought with me an award to present and hope that you will come down and take a picture with our group, the 2016 Starburst Award, and the photo that was submitted to present the application for consideration. Congratulations.
Thank you. We'll go out. I just want to say thank you to you and the lottery, and I think we all feel this way. You have funded so many of our projects, including the ice rink, I think the bridge you walked over. And so if it wasn't for these funds, I don't think this community would have a lot of the amenities we have, so we are very, very, very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Laura. Is there anyone else that would like to say a few words?
The architect's with us today.
Who about the architect?
Well, then, thank you. We will come down and join you.
I'm up here, I'm gonna need two pictures.
our community. Next up, we've got Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion.
Why don't you eat a little? Don't take me getting the...
Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by
Can I present to the mayor?
staff or advisory boards.
Did you? Why present?
It's the mayor to the one.
Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration.
Who put the mayor in?
Tonight, we have four items. I do want you to know that today is Wednesday. We have the approval of the minutes of the meeting for October 5, 2016.
[laughter]
Get real friendly here.
Receive the September 2016 monthly reports.
Take a picture.
One.
Yeah, sorry.
Receive the August and September 2016 expenditure report.
Thank you. Pass that to the president.
She's a president.
Yes, please.
And the award of bid for the 2016 golf course water supply project.
The liar is on you.
Sure, but sorry about that.
Are we doing it there?
Are exactly correct?
Thank you.
And then, we have people in the audience that came because of this, so thank you
Council, do we have any questions or comments on Consent Calendar A?
all for being here.
Thank you.
And we have...
[applause]
Counselor Beale?
They look fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't want to pull any item off the consent calendar, but I'd like to just acknowledge
That's why I love it.
Thank you.
Very good.
that for the water supply at the golf course, we budgeted 150 for it, and the bid that we might accept tonight is at 92,000. So great work by Patton staff on that.
That's only the first phase. The second phase of the money is for the inlet structure and the pump house and stuff.
Thank you, Pat.
But we anticipated to come in budget.
Very good. Are there any other questions or comments on Consent Calendar A? Counselor Beale?
If there's no other further discussion, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second.
I've got a motion to second to approve Consent Calendar A. Is there any further discussion? See none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business. Tonight, we have presentations from outside agencies, the Disability Employment Awareness Month, and ASU/ASF homecoming presentation. We will start out with the Disabilities Employment Awareness Month. And thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. October is National Disability Awareness Month, and inside your packet, you'll see a flyer in there. And what we can do, there's three major areas that Voc Rehab can be of assistance to any organization. We are state and federally funded, so we can come in and help people with disabilities gain employment and maintain employment. The first area that we can really be of assistance is if you called me and said, "Dave, I'm looking to fill this position, and this is what I'm looking for in the right candidate," then that's who we would send over to go through whatever it is your hiring process looks like. If we did not have somebody that met what you were looking for, we would tell you so. We just don't send anybody over because that's a lose-lose situation. A lot of people say, "Well, what kinds of disabilities does Voc Rehab work with?" It runs the gamut. Tom Cruise could qualify for our service because he has dyslexia. Prince Charles has ADHD, all the way to whatever type of disability you can imagine. And in fact, I personally have placed a professor, I've placed RNs, I've placed people out digging a hole to build a fence. Everything is based on client choice or informed choice of what their vocational goal is. The second area that we can be of assistance to any organization is retention of employees. If you have an employee that has a disability or gets a disability, they or the organization can contact Voc Rehab, and we would step in and get that individual whatever services it is they need to maintain their job, whether it's medical, psychological, equipment, training, counseling, the list goes on and on, at no cost to the organization and no cost to the individual. It's tax dollars at work. And the third area, and as highlighted in the folder you have there, we have an entire litany of disability awareness training. On the left-hand side, you'll see what looks like an Excel spreadsheet, and it breaks out what a two-hour or four-hour type training may look like, and it lists who it might be for. That's purely just an example. It lists the course name and how long that course is. We can do anywhere from a 10-, 15-minute training to, last month, I did eight hours of diversity training for Walmart in Trinidad. If you look on the right-hand side, you'll see a brief description of what is covered in each one of those trainings. All of our services are free. A lot of people don't know who we are and what we can do and how we can help an organization. Voc Rehab has 32 offices scattered around the state of Colorado, so even if somebody starts with Voc Rehab here in Alamosa and then moves to Greeley or Fort Collins, we transfer their file up there, and services are not interrupted. One major thing, and then I'll be done, is if you have an employee that thinks they have a disability, but they do not have the means to go see the right professional, the psychologist, the medical doctor, still send them to see us, because we, Voc Rehab, will pay for them to see the correct professional they need to, to get proof of that disability so that we can provide them the services that they need. We may provide four years of school for them to meet the vocational goal they want. We may put tires on their car so they can get to them from work, provide them work clothes, whatever it is that we can do, and it's on a case-by-case basis, to get them to work. Work is the end goal for what Voc Rehab does. Any questions?
I have a question.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for what you do. We very much appreciate you and our community, so it's a wonderful service. And my mother went to Voc Rehab and got help to go back to school, and that was in another state, and she did a great thing, and so it's just been, it's a fantastic service. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about is if, so someone comes in and they have a disability and they kind of want to talk through that, you also talk to them about keeping all of their other benefits and finding the right level of employment as well, right?
Absolutely. And thank you for the question. They may be getting SSI or SSDI, Social Security Income or Disability Income, where they can only work part-time or seasonal, then that's the employment that will put them in so that they do not lose those benefits that they're getting.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Coleman?
Yeah, I want to thank you very much for the work that you're doing. I've seen you at other events across town, and I'm just curious, what type of numbers of work pool we have here in the valley that you're assisting right now?
We have three councilors here that cover the entire San Luis Valley, and each one of them is running a caseload of approximately 75. So is that 225 individuals we have in the valley? We have somewhere in the neighborhood of 14,000 to 16,000 statewide.
Wow, that's amazing, Will. Thank you for the work you're doing, and thank you for helping our people in our community get the assistance that they need so that they could feel productive and do great things in our community. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, David. And you know, one of the biggest things and one of the most positive things is just being aware that these things are available. Many times, people don't know, you know, and so you coming and visiting with us may open the eyes of quite a few people out in the community. So thank you again for being here, David.
I thought of one more thing, David. Don't sit down. Sorry, Mayor. So one of the other things that, do you still need job sites for training where people can go and be with one of your councilors to help them learn the job skills and they can be monitored? Do you still need those sites?
Yes. We set up vendors to do what we call situational assessments. A client may come in and work with a counselor, and they pick cleaning hotel rooms, but that counselor does not know if that client possesses that skill set or not. So we'll go to one of the local hotels, sign them up to be a vendor, and then we'll do what we call a 30-hour situational assessment, where that client will go onsite for 30 hours, maybe four hours a day, maybe two hours a day, or eight hours a day, and work as an employee in that business. That business does not pay that individual, and there's a job coach with that individual that will write a report back to that counselor stating whether they possess the skill set or not. At the end of that 30 hours, there is no obligation to hire the individual, which sometimes they do, and we turn around and pay that employer approximately $530 for doing the situational assessment. The individual is covered under the state of Colorado's workman's comp, so there is no liability to the business. Sure.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions?
Any more questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your presence. Now we'll move on to the fine group from Adams State University, ASF, for their homecoming presentation. I can feel the, I can feel the homecoming fires burning.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
It's called a bonfire.
There you go, yeah. Thursday night?
Well, thank you. I'm Lori Lasky. I'm the alumni director at Adams State University, and I have with me here today...
So I'm John Owsley. I am the VP of External Affairs with ASF, the Associated Students and Faculty.
I am Brooke Stokel. I work in the Department of Student Life and Leadership, and I am a member of the Homecoming Committee.
And what we wanted to do today is thank you for giving us the time, but we wanted to come in and invite all of the council to join us for homecoming and the greater Alamosa community. We have a great lineup of different activities. We had, thank you, Chris, for putting these out. Friday, we have a golf outing. We have a banquet where we will be honoring John Salazar, Joe Garcia, and Amber Harland Price all at our banquet. We have a volleyball game. We have different performances. And on Saturday, at 10 o'clock, we have our annual parade. And with that, we have a football game afterwards, tailgate party, and a whole bunch of activities. So really, my purpose tonight is to come here and invite you and hope that you will join us.
Thank you.
And part of the reason that ASF is here as well is that I forgot to hand these out already, but I might hand these out real quick. But if you'd like to talk about the...
Sure, yeah. Another one of our events that we would like to reach out to the community for is our bonfire, which is on Thursday evening this year, and it is being held on the Richardson lawn rather than out near the softball fields. And so that is something that is family-friendly for anyone who would like to come. In addition to that, for the parade this year, we would like to open up to city council members and community members, if anyone would like to volunteer to be a judge for the parade, for the floats that are passing by. We do have five seats that are open, because we would love to get the community involved, and John's going to talk more about that.
Yes, so what you have in front of you is actually a outline of our ASF strategic plan for the year. So this is for our '16 and '17 school year. I forgot to put that at the header, but if you look, I highlighted at the bottom, we have our initiative five as a brand-new initiative, and it's facilitate student and community relationships. So underneath that is facilitate the development of a sense of community within the students, and even underneath that is build a relationship with city council and local governments. So within this strategic plan, ASF stands for Associated Students and Faculty. A little brief overview of that is that it's a mainly student-based RAN organization, but we also have representation of faculty as well. But we, every year, we make a strategic plan, and this year, we felt it was very important to put community relations as part of that. And one of the main things, retention, we struggle with retention at the university, is a lot of students don't have a sense of community or fail to get a sense of community, so we felt like that was vital to put in our strategic plan to hopefully increase. So I was hoping that we can get here together with the Grizzly Activity Board, which Brooke is also a part of, and come together and start this relationship so that I could hopefully be a person, a conduit between you guys as well and ASF, so that we can get together and help our student body more, so.
Thank you, John. Counselor Hensley?
So let's see if I get through this without coughing too much. I've been conserving what I talk about. So John and I have been working together, and I'm very, very proud of everything you've done. I'm really excited. He approached me. I'm looking forward to, even though I am faculty at Adams State, I am going to come to your meetings, but I'm going to be wearing my city council hat.
Yes.
And so I'm really looking forward to that. And I just think that you're doing a great job. Both of you are awesome, and I'm looking forward to this partnership and us working closer together. And I, for one, will volunteer to be one of your judges as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I did forget to mention that the Councilman Hensley has helped us so much and helped us to come here tonight and start this off, so I'm really excited about this new bond.
Very good. Counselor Coleman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. John, Brooke, and Lori, thank you all for coming out here tonight. It's very impressive to see that you thought enough of city council to put us, make us a part of your strategic plan. And I also would like to volunteer my services to you. Whenever possible, I'd be glad to show up and support you in any activities that you have. So I look forward to working with you all. John, for many of you probably know that he's Jeff's son.
Yes, guilty.
And he's a mover and a shaker at the college, I'll tell you that. So keep up the great work that you are doing, and I really appreciate it. And I will be at the banquet, I believe it's on Friday, so I will participate in some of the homecoming activities as well.
Thank you.
for the parade this year, we would like to open up to city council members and community members. If anyone would like to volunteer to be a judge for the parade, for the floats that are passing by, we do have five seats that are open, because we would love to get the community involved. And John's going to talk more about that.
Yes. So what you have in front of you is actually a outline of our ASNF strategic plan for the year. So this is for our sixteen and seventeen school year. I forgot to put that at the header. But if you look, I highlighted at the bottom, we have our initiative, five is a brand-new initiative, and it's facilitate student and community relationships. So underneath that is facilitate the development of a sense of community within the students, and even underneath that is build a relationship with city council and local governments. So within this strategic plan, ASNF stands for Associated Students and Faculty. A little brief overview of that is that it's a mainly student-based RAN organization, but we also have representation of faculty as well. But we, every year, we make a strategic plan, and this year, we felt it was very important to put community relations as part of that. And one of the main things, retention, we struggle with retention at the university, is a lot of students don't have a sense of community or fail to get a sense of community. So we felt like that was vital to put in our strategic plan to hopefully increase. So I was hoping that we can get here together with the Grizzly Activity Board, which Brooke is also a part of, and come together and start this relationship so that I could hopefully be a person, a conduit between you guys as well and ASNF, so that we can get together and help our student body more, so.
Thank you, John. Councilor Hensley?
So let's see if I get through this without coughing too much. I've been conserving what I talk about. So John and I have been working together, and I'm very, very proud of everything you've done. I'm really excited. He approached me. I'm looking forward to, even though I am faculty at Adam State, I am going to come to your meetings, but I'm going to be wearing my city council hat.
Yes.
And so I'm really looking forward to that. And I just think that you're doing a great job. Both of you are awesome. And I'm looking forward to this partnership and us working closer together. And I, for one, will volunteer to be one of your judges as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I did forget to mention that the Councilman Hensley has helped us so much and helped us become, to come here tonight and start this off. So I'm really excited about this new bond.
Very good. Councilor Coleman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. John, Brooke, and Lori, thank you all for coming out here tonight. It's very impressive to see that you thought enough of city council to put us, make us a part of your strategic plan. And I also would like to volunteer my services to you. Whenever possible, I'll be glad to show up and support you in any activities that you have. So I look forward to working with you all. John, for many of you probably know that he's Jeff's son.
Yes, guilty.
He's a mover and a shaker at the college, I'll tell you that. So keep up the great work that you are doing, and I really appreciate it. And I will be at the banquet, I believe it's on Friday. So I will participate in some of the homecoming activities as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And we do enjoy a great relationship. I know that our city manager and your college president are generally in very good communication with one another about what's going on. But you know, thank you for including us as well. We appreciate it. And I also plan to be there on, I believe, Friday.
Yes.
John, so John, Lori, and Brooke?
Yes.
Thank you so much for being here. Unless there are any other comments?
Awesome.
Again, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you. You too.
Look forward to homecoming. Next up, we have Business Brought Forward by City Stamp. Tonight, we have two issues, specifically dealing with finance. We have a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-sixteen, and ordinance making the annual appropriations for fiscal year twenty-seventeen, and a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-sixteen, and ordinance establishing the employee pay plan for the fiscal year of twenty-seventeen. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. During the first meeting, I spent a lot of time reviewing the information in the council communication. Considering this is the second meeting, I'm going to condense that a little bit. But essentially, this is what will formalize our annual budget. It ranks right towards the top of one of the more important documents and council actions that you'll take in a year. It gives the city the direction of what to focus on from a service and project perspective. And so unless there's questions that you want me to go over any of the changes, otherwise, I'll turn it over to you and the public hearing.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, do we have any questions, comments, or analysis for our city manager? I will entertain. Okay. Well, with that, then I will open the public hearing on ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-sixteen and bring it forward. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this subject, please approach the podium, state your wishes. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, E209 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. Now, I've been around here twenty-one years, come November, and I've watched the town grow. I've watched some inside stuff going on. And for a small town, as far as I'm concerned, you really do a good job fiscal responsibility. Now here's, I come from a different point of view. I'm not the Tesla guy. I'm not going to predict everybody's going to have an elected car. I'm not a futurist, but both the Democratic and Republican Party know we can't grow ourselves out of the long-term deficits. We can't tax ourselves out of it. And here's what I hope you do in the future with your budgets. Don't create a lot of things where you can have overhead problems. You got the rec center? You got to take care of it. You're going to put in this facility for entertainment and for ice arena. Down the line, there's not going to be as much free money. Now, I try to be fair and pragmatic. What I'd like to see them do is take each program and fine-tune it. But you're not going to have that. You're going to have Republicans want their cup of tea, Democrats want their cup of tea, and there's going to be a fight like you won't believe. The free money is not going to be there. So try not to create a bunch of things where you're going to have overhead situations. Now, being small, you can handle this. You've seen what happened to Detroit. You've seen these big communities. By the way, Vallejo, California, was one of the early ones that declared bankruptcy. Santa Rosa High School played against, we were in their conference. And you talked to the mayor. They knew this stuff was coming for years, and nobody wanted to handle it. Now, you got a shot at it because you're small. You keep, to me, the city's job is number one, police, fire, protection, road, sewer, the basic stuff, water. You create a bunch of overhead situations, you don't want the town to look like a ghost town. And you're going to see this stuff in bigger communities. And the longer they wait, the more problems they're going to have dealing with this. Like I say, unfair. Take every program and just fine-tune it a little bit. But the longer they wait, the more draconian they're going to be. Now, I think you'll do the right thing. And if you don't, you'll see what happens.
Thank you, Mr. McCann, for those words of wisdom. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against ordinance number seventeen twenty-sixteen? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number seventeen twenty-sixteen and bring it back to council for further deliberation or a decision.
I move we introduce...
Counselor Stefano, you have the floor.
I move that we introduce ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-sixteen establishing the twenty-seventeen budget.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. On ordinance number seventeen twenty-sixteen, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting.
Just to be clear, Counsel, you're voting on actual final passage of this, not just introduction?
Yes. I think, is that what you meant, Counselor Stefano? Thank you. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
We will move on to the public hearing and second reading on ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-sixteen. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is the second reading for this pay plan. We did not make any changes from last year. We did discuss whether or not we should do a COLA, but since we have been in the new pay plan after conducting a market survey for a year, we felt that probably one more year was most appropriate before recommending something like that. This just gives me the range of authority for when we are filling vacancies or making changes of where we can hire and move people around. So without any questions, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions or comments for Heather, Counsel? I will entertain a motion. Or, I'm sorry. I get ahead of myself. With that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-sixteen. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium, state your wishes. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-sixteen, and now bring it back to council for a discussion or a decision. Counselor ViHill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve on second reading ordinance eighteen dash twenty-sixteen establishing the employee pay plan with an effective date of January one, twenty-seventeen.
Counselor Daniel?
I will second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize there are people in the audience who think this happened really fast. We've had lots of work sessions about the budget, and the staff has done a lot of work. So we're not like, oh, yeah, this is cool. So I just kind of wanted to make sure everybody knew that we've actually spent a whole lot of time reviewing the budget and looking at these numbers, and it's not just checking off a box at this point for us. So thank you for all the hard work Heather and your team has done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on now to committee reports. Any committee reports? Counselor Hensley?
Yes, he there. So I went to two different board meetings. The first one I went to was the airport board, and really exciting stuff. The main thing, obviously, is the excitement over boutique airlines coming here. And I think they come, tomorrow's their first day, I believe. So I think if I have it right, I think tomorrow's their first day flying out. So that's really exciting. And then the other one is I had the marketing board. And a couple of things to highlight is we do have a new member on the board, Jeff Owlsley, who just left, but he's on the board. And Beat the Heat won the best event in the Rocky Mountains regions out of twenty-one different events. So that was pretty exciting as well. And I think that's what I have as far as my reports.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended a meeting this week with the San Luis Valley Development Resource Group, and they have a new executive director. His name is Kevin Wilkins, and he'll be moving to Alamosa. In fact, he should close on his home any day now. And he'll be starting with the San Luis Valley DRG on November the first, replacing Michael Wisdom.
Counselor ViHill?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a meeting last week with the Rio Grande Farm Park Group. The main thing was the Starburst Award that they just received. Also, they were contacted by a private donor for hopes of maybe getting a cabin to put on the property. But there's a lot of hoops that they have to jump through with the county and moving it and just a bunch of stuff. So they're in the process of trying to get that cabin over there. And it would serve, hopefully, one day as a, first as a shed to store farm items, and then maybe to, one day, become a resident for someone who works on that property. So.
Thank you, Counselor ViHill. Thank you, Counselor Coleman. I attended the Policy Committee meeting on Friday, October, then it was the fourteenth of October, and I think Counselor Hensley attended the Executive Board meeting, which is basically almost immediately after the committee, Policy Committee had many issues. I will have a final version that will be presented to us, and I will email that to you. I will put preliminary agenda material in a reading file, and you will be privy to that. But once the other stuff comes in, I will be more than happy to send that out to you, email. Counselor Hensley?
I was just going to add, so we did have our Executive Board meeting on Tuesday, and everything that you went ahead and worked on, we went ahead and approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Hensley. And you know, it is great to have you on that Executive Board. And you and I are going to have to have lunch and go over some of this stuff. But there are a lot of new issues that are coming up. Some of them involve criminal justice. Some of them are still involving marijuana, where I think Denver's going to be voting on an issue specific to having clubs, where you can go in and say, that's going to, we'll see how that's going to turn out. But that's going to be something that Trinidad is also looking at, and that's smoke clubs for marijuana. And so, but I think when it comes to CML, it's going to be an individual municipality or city or county issue, so, because they like home rule. So we will, we will just kind of keep you up to date on that, Counsel, as we go along. Any other committee reports? We'll move on to staff announcements. Ms. Heather or Holly?
Actually, I'm going to go first. So I am just asking for direction. So there's a vacant seat on the Historic Preservation Committee. You guys conducted interviews for that in June, and then we, and we had two parties interested. One was appointed and one was not. We have a vacant seat now, but my question for you guys is if you want to do an interview again, or if you want to just appoint them into the position at a regular meeting. You don't have a set policy on that right now, so.
And any comments for Holly? Counselor ViHill?
Thank you, Mayor. I am the liaison on that board, and I remember the interviews we had that night. We were, we had some serious discussion, because they were both very qualified candidates. So I would suggest that we just appoint that gentleman.
And I have been in contact with him. He is still interested.
Okay. Counselor Hensley? Okay, all right. Thank you, Holly. Ms. Heather?
So Holly will have that for a future agenda item, so we can get that board back up to their full number. I do have a few other staff updates. The first one is today we had our fourth annual Employee Wellness Fair, and we had that with our new HR manager, and she worked well with the team. It's something where, you know, obviously, having healthier employees is better from the bottom line for the city. But I think the bigger issue that I thought was very uplifting was when they do the biometrics, if there's any employees that maybe some of their test results were coming back close to something, there was people onsite for them to make the connections and get advice and to start looking at some of the things they needed to do for their health. And so I think from a personal perspective, it's always very promising to connect employees with those types of resources. And so we're grateful that we were able to have that. The second item I just wanted to share with you is Pat did host the Ice Ringed Multipurpose Facility Kickoff Meeting last week with the consultant. The good news is, looking at the budget, they feel that it's a very good and strong budget. So I thought that was very reassuring and wanted to share that with council. The second one is that we did schedule a work session to follow your regularly-scheduled meeting on November sixteenth. We just, we can't move the other work session that's scheduled before, which is for the joint P&amp;Z review of the comp plan. So in order to keep both projects moving appropriately, we really needed to keep both of those. And so we'll try to keep that agenda light, knowing that that might turn into a longer night. So wanted to make you aware of that. This Saturday at nine o'clock, we do have the recycling shelter ribbon cutting, and so I wanted to remind everyone for that. And Halloween Fright Fest, that I believe our police department is playing a role in, will be at Cole Park. I think this is kind of our first time doing this and partnering with community groups to try to make this a positive experience for our youth. It starts at four PM and I think goes until it gets dark. So this is a new event, and hopefully it will take off. I know I'll be bringing two superheroes to visit that. So I also want to share that we do have the utility rate work session next week. We're going to kind of finish that discussion for the utility rate structure, and then they're also going to present the curbside recycling information as well for council consideration. And I believe that's all I have. Any other staff updates? That's all we have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. We'll move on then to council comment. Who on council has a comment? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I will be on vacation next week and am sad to miss the utility rate and curbside recycling discussion, but I was wondering if I could call in, because I will be in a place that I could do that.
I don't think we have a policy on it. It is a work session, which clearly means you guys won't be voting. And I think how we've handled that in the past from a work session, and Eric, you can correct me, is we've allowed council to decide if you're comfortable with that or not.
Okay, cool.
Where's Charlie when you need him? I don't recall a call-in happening in the past for someone who is just out of town. So you really do need to wrestle with this in your council policy, which you have upcoming in the near future. And there's certainly nothing that would prohibit you from allowing Counselor Daniel to do that. It just hasn't typically been your practice.
Yeah.
Twenty thirteen is when you did. Sorry. But I think it's the only time in my memory of allowing it. It was a budget work session, and I believe Greg Gylipski and Tuggle were out of town and called in. And if I remember correctly, you know, Eric is correct, we need to get a policy on this. I think the concern was we didn't want people to make it a habit and to, you know, just be sitting at home in their PJs maybe, doing this instead of showing up. So those were some of the concerns expressed by council, but I think it is council's prerogative.
Counselor Daniel?
So, you know, if everybody wants to think about that, I would be willing to call in next week from California. So that would be fine, if you're up for that. The other thing I wanted to say is I did attend the opioid roundtable with Congressman Tipton yesterday, and also took a tour of the jail before that. And he was wonderful to listen to our community events and the things that are happening, really talking about this epidemic. And I think that the more information we can have as city council and sharing that with our community and the other people that we come into contact with about how to get services and supports, and really working towards some massive support for people with addiction and other behavioral health concerns, I think that we can do some really good work. And if you haven't taken a tour of the jail, I highly recommend that, doing that with the sheriff. the sheriff. It is enlightening to say the very least. So I just wanted to say that I was able to attend that, and that was a fantastic meeting with the congressman.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Hensley?
So on October eleventh, I did attend the police informational that was at SLV Pizza. And I thought the police and State Patrol and the sheriffs were represented there. And I thought they did a great job. And I thought there was a great turnout, which I think we were pleasantly surprised just how many people came. It actually filled up the whole area. And so thank you very much for doing that. And I thought you guys did a great job. And then I just was going to make an announcement. There is going to be a hemp symposium on November fifth, and it is a full day, all-day Saturday event. A lot of great presentations. Hemp has really become something that, for our community, is becoming a crop that is really being looked at and could really make a difference. So anyway, anybody who's interested in that, that is on November fifth at Adam State.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. And hemp is, hemp is, got this bad name, but it's really not a marijuana type that everybody thinks of many times. I know that the mayor of Antonito and some of his relatives are actually growing five, 10 acres of hemp. And it's, it's actually a very lucrative crop and safe because there are so many things. Anyway, attend that if you can. All right. Anyone else? If not, yes?
If we could maybe have a conclusion on Councilman Daniel, her offer of calling in?
On her request?
Yeah, because that's next week, so I won't be able to get direction from council other than tonight.
Well, I just need to add, I need to add too, I won't be here next Wednesday. I'm on vacation as well.
Okay. So are we going to have two people calling in or?
I won't be calling in, period, I'm going to tell you. I'll be out of the country. But I will be on vacation so that I'm, sorry.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure. I think this is probably something we should, we should discuss. If we need a, if we need a definite decision this evening, I'm not sure.
I don't know if you have another time to discuss this.
Are we even going to have a quorum there or?
Well, it is a work session.
It's just an informational kind of thing. However, with informational kind of issues, I mean, can't somebody just write down their thoughts and they can be shared with the group that is participating?
Well, I, so I think part of the work session is one to share information, to present information to council. And then obviously to just collect council feedback on that information. And so council hasn't had the opportunity to hear the information on the curbside recycling yet. So I don't think that they could provide information ahead of time for, or feedback on that. And I think what they're coming back with us on the rate structure is some of those ideas and direction we gave them and how that's going to play out. And so I'm not sure writing something down in advance would work well for this type of work session.
Okay. Well, that was just a thought, and I think that's what has happened in the past. Either that or many of the thoughts are presented to our city manager or someone so they can be disseminated during the meeting. However, if it's going to present a problem, maybe we should reschedule the meeting or the work session.
Well, I mean, we can look at it, but we need to finalize, we need to get clear direction on the rates so we can finalize the budget and get that done.
Are you anticipating that this is going to go into effect in 2017? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yes.
If it's approved by council?
Yeah. So we need to be able to have the votes in November and December. We, so and it's, we need to get the rate structure approved and changed and before council on your set meeting dates.
Very good. Counselor Vehill?
Counselor Hensley?
Oh, it doesn't matter. I was just going to say that I know if I wasn't here, I definitely would have, would have liked to be able to call in. I think this is a good discussion. I guess I'm looking at it that there's no voting or anything. So I personally would be totally fine. And I think it's a way, you know, a lot of us do get busy, and so sometimes we can't keep putting off meetings. And so I think it's a great way to keep on track, especially in a non-voting situation. So I vote, or I would say that it's okay for me, in my point of view, for people to call in.
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Counselor Hensley. I'd like to listen in as well. However, if there is enough people up here who don't want that, I would suggest then if, and I haven't talked to Christine, Ms. Daniel about this either, that we get the information that night or the next day, and then we can maybe meet with you, Heather, and offer our two cents and be prepared for the next meeting when we might have to decide on this.
I'm cool with that.
That's fine. I guess we, then it would be council's, in a sense, it's council's direction to go ahead with the telephone conferencing. Is that something that we can do this time around? Counselor Coleman?
I think we should, Mayor, because I think this is probably the first time where you had three counselors who are going to be out of town on vacation at the same time. And I think if you have a council member who's willing to call in to listen in, to get the information, I think that is something we should consider this time.
Absolutely. Counselor Daniel?
Well, thank you. And I would agree with Counselor Vehill's option as well. So if that's not something that we're comfortable with because we don't have a policy, I would support that. But it, would it after that work session be the time that we would vote on it? Is that when you're going to put it on the agenda, Heather?
Depending on how much we deviate from some of the recommendations, we would try to get it back before council as soon as possible for a vote.
Okay. So I am, I am comfortable with either option. So it's totally the rest of you.
And Counselor Daniel, I want you to know that it's fine with me. I don't have a problem with it. I think we're going to need that feedback, no matter in what form it comes in. I think it's important for all of us to be there or at least have our ideas being presented. And so I'm fine with that. We just have to set it up. I'm sure Heather or Jim or somebody's going to be busy that evening.
We'll get it taken care of.
Okay, it'll taken care of. Thank you. Staff's always so good about these things. Appreciate that. All right. Any other council comment? If not, we have the need for an executive session this evening, executive session pursuant to CRS. And I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four six dash four oh two four F to discuss personnel matters relating to the finance director.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session. And after the executive session, we will move back into regular session. However, let's go ahead and vote on that. Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
After our executive session, I got ahead of myself, we will go back into regular session. No further business will be discussed. Thank you.